Yeah. There we go. Good, here we go. Welcome, everyone. I, Deputy Council President Barbara D. Michelle, called the June 16th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Council President Walsh is with us remotely this evening. Thank you for being here. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. First, there is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or second, you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you had joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon or send the host a chat message. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I will wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. I will read the guidelines. You are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lecturing in the in-person attendees, and there is a button up there to press, and it will turn the microphone red. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and comments are limited to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, can you identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Brad Feingood.
Okay, Brad, press the button, and it will turn the microphone red. There you go.
Thank you for having me. My name is Brad Feingood, for the record, and I live up on Forest Drive, just up the hill from here. Thank you for having me today. Before I get into what I wanted to talk about, first of all, my apologies. When I walked out of the house, I did not actually intend to come to the council meeting. I was taking my dog for a walk until I realized that the shield that I was wearing, you know, represents a different city. I am here, you know, I've been a resident of Issaquah for 11 years, and I know many of you, and I've been in contact with a lot of you throughout the years due to my work. Ninety-nine percent of the time when I state that I'm from Issaquah, I'm extremely proud that I'm from Issaquah. I love it here. The community is beautiful, nature is beautiful, schools are beautiful. All three of my kids went to school here. I'm here today, though, on something that I'm actually not really proud about. So it was brought to my attention that two people died in the city jail of fentanyl overdose or fentanyl withdrawal. I actually don't know the answer to that. And that the city came up with a $5.5 million payout, according to Cascade PBS. This startles me for a number of reasons. Number one, as a taxpaying citizen of the city of Issaquah, that's either my tax money or that's my money that I paid into taxes that have gone into risk pool or into insurance, all those type of things. But really why it saddens me is because we had two people die under our care of a preventable death. As in addition to being a resident of the city professionally, I'm in my day job, that's not how I'm here now, but I'm in charge of overdose prevention for all of King County. It saddens me that in the city that I live in, that we had two people die underneath our care that was extremely preventable. And when I mean preventable, it's a very preventable death. I am a national leader in overdose prevention, and I bring that to you as a tool, knowing that the work that happens in our county is shared with the city of Issaquah and that we are able to work together to make sure that these types of things don't happen under our care. And I bring that, as a resident, I bring that as in in my professional role, too. My questions to you are, what policies are changing in the jail as a result of that? I urge you to have a briefing in front of council to understand that. I understand that corrections healthcare is a really difficult situation sometimes, and I'm not saying it's not, but I am saying that this is preventable. I also believe that we have a human service commission here in Issaquah that should be able to look at this and take this up and come up with some best practices. And I, again, offer myself up to you as a resource. When I say I'm a national expert, it's pretty easy to figure, it's pretty easy to find me. And I just want to close by saying that it's much easier for us to do this before anybody else dies. Nobody else has to die under our care. I'm the survivor of a brother that died of an overdose. So those two people that died under our care are somebody's kids. There's a possibility that they're somebody's parents, and there's a possibility that they're somebody's siblings. If we don't, if we don't and can't handle this willingly, then we'll be under a DOJ decree, or we'll be sued, or we'll have another lawsuit on our hands, which is how so many of these jails have moved towards evidence-based treatment. The evidence-based treatment isn't really costly, but it's extremely super effective. And I can't even begin to think about what would be like the cost differential of us doing it the right way versus losing lives or having to come up with a $5.5 million settlement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there another, someone else who would like to comment?
No, I do see one member of the public with us electronically, but there's no one indicating a desire to comment.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments that we heard regarding fentanyl overdoses. As we said earlier, it's not a question and answer period, but someone can follow up with you, Brad, to tell you the answer to your questions. Thank you. All right, we will go on to our agenda. And let me get the number correct. We, our first agenda item is CLM 0143, Wildfire Evacuation Time Estimate Study, and it will be presented by Jared Schneider, Emergency Manager for the city of Issaquah.
All right. Good evening, council. Just give me one moment while I get my screen fired up here. Okay, great. Well, good evening. It's a pleasure, again, to be in front of you all to talk about this topic that is not only something important to me as the emergency manager, emergency manager, but us as the community, you know, here in Issaquah. It's a sensitive topic. It's one that continues to come up, unfortunately, around our country as more and more devastating wildfires impact, really, the Western US. And so it's also very timely with summer coming up. So I'm happy to share with you all just the results of something that you all have had input on and that we've been talking about for quite some time, but it is really just another, another start and another way that we are learning to protect our community through this really challenging disaster. So with that, the purpose of today's meeting is to share information on our planning process, the results of the study, and really what we're going to do now that we have the study in our hands. And then we'd also like to spend some time identifying future evacuation scenarios, and I'll talk a little bit about what that means in a little bit, to help us deepen our understanding of this challenge and ways that we can better protect our community. So the direction needed from council is, does the city council have additional ideas for wildfire evacuation risk reduction scenarios that the administration should consider? So to set the table, first, I want to talk about Western Washington wildfire. Thirty to forty percent of wildfires in Washington occur on the west side of the Cascade Crest. And if that's a surprising number to you, that was actually surprising to me the first time I read that. You know, the east side of the state is much more known for its wildfires and for its, you know, devastating summers. But really, you know, I bring up this number to show that wildfires, they're happening here, albeit they're much smaller and typically in the form of like brush fires, if you will. But this is a now problem, right? So this is a, this is a situation that we need to be planning for currently. In terms of our risk, our highest risk is actually in September and early October. And the reason for that, well, it's a little bit later than some other parts of the West, is that just has given our vegetation really ample time to dry out our snowpack, to really diminish and to really just create the conditions that are more similar to what the east side of the state look like. And that really does come in that September, early October timeframe. We have two types of wildfires that we plan for here on the west side of the Cascades, and one is kind of low severity events. And these are typically smaller, not all those climatic conditions are quite right for a wildfire, yet the main thing is wind. They're not typically accompanied by like high wind events. And so these fires, they can sit, they can smolder for sometimes weeks on end, honestly, just staying up in the canopy, kind of burning, maybe slowly like inching along. And these are, these are our most common types of wildfires. Again, thirty, forty percent of these fires, this is kind of what they look like here on the western Cascades. Now, the second type of fire that we plan for are these high severity events. And, and these events, this is when all those conditions, they're right, they're ripe for fire. And, you know, firefighters will kind of describe them as high wind events that happen to have a fire in them, really. So eastern, dry winds, low relative humidity, that is like, that's what raises the hairs on our back, you know, of our neck, right? Is those types of events for wildfire. That's really what we look for here in Western Washington. Because if we get those, as you all know, our forests are full of fuel, right? There's the potential for them to burn. Most of the times, they don't, right? But if the conditions are right, there is ample, ample supply. So with that, I just wanted to highlight, too, where is our wildfire risk going? And this probably doesn't surprise you, but it is going up. So the annual days of extreme fire danger in Western Washington are increasing from sixteen is about where we're at right now, and we're projecting in 24 and 2069 to have about twenty-four extreme wildfire danger days. And so, again, those are days, right, where things have dried out, it's hot, low relative humidity. So those are our high-risk days. So our risk is increasing. So let's talk about now, the wildfire evacuation time estimate study. So the wildfire evacuation time estimate study is really made up of three main factors. One, it's a time to start your trip, and so this is fed by community information. I'll talk a little bit about that community survey in just a moment. The second is estimating the amount of traffic. So like how many cars are on the road in any given moment, right, in an evacuation? And then the third is a transportation network, right? So actually, understanding our infrastructure and how vehicles travel on it and what this, what it would look like utilizing our current infrastructure for an evacuation. And all that turns into an evacuation time estimate study. So a couple of things. The evacuation time estimate study is the time that it takes for people to leave the city of Issaquah. It's not the time that it takes for people to get to safe shelter, right? So there's a distinction there. This is to exit city boundaries. Next, it accounts for the number of buses, pair of transit needs, for schools, assisted living, and the homeless community. So we did factor in that population as well, too. And then it also estimates a thirteen percent shadow evacuation from areas not directly inside of Issaquah, but people that may leave, you know, for a wildfire that may impact us in our evacuation, too. And, and just because it was brought up by Councilmember Jiang to, you know, there is intentions of having a countywide wildfire evacuation time estimate study right now as part of their community wildfire protection planning process. Right now, there is no countywide plan happening, but it is something hopefully that will happen eventually, right? And that would really be descriptive of that large, like mega-fire, if you will, right? That very large standard placing hundreds of thousands to million acres fires, right? But, but this plan is specifically for us here in Issaquah, right? Because that's, that's really our scope for, for this study. Okay, so to talk about where we've been and where we are now. So in spring of last year, we kicked off the study with the contractor who conducted this study coming out and driving the roads and virtually building our transportation network in a simulation. That's, that's how they model it, is through a virtual space. They marked everything down, like every road sign, traffic signal timings, speeds that it takes to travel roundabouts and the like. It's a very detailed process. I should say, too, this, this engineering firm has been in this business for about, I think about twenty years doing this type of work. They actually started modeling evacuations for nuclear reactor accidents after the Five Mile incident in New York. It became a mandate that evacuations be estimated and planned for a little bit and more in depth. And so this software that fed our study is really kind of the next level of that type of simulation, and they're applying it to wildfire. And so that is kind of their background, if that's helpful information. In summer of 2024, we conducted a community survey where we asked residents some key information that would help us understand how many vehicles they had and how long it would take people to get ready to evacuate. We had over three hundred and eighty respondents to that survey, which is a pretty good turnout. But again, that information feeds, right, just like how long it takes people to get ready, which is really important in a little bit, and we'll talk about that more. In the fall of 2024, we were doing some data gathering. And so the types of data that we were looking for was the number of buses that we have in King County, the number of schoolchildren that ride buses home, the number of population of our assisted living facilities, things like that, and involving our school district really intimately in that process there. In the spring of this year, we got our draft plan, and we developed our first round of evacuation scenarios, which we'll talk about in a little bit, too. And then summer is where we're at now. We have our finalized evacuation time estimate study, and we are in the process of sharing these results with the community. So to look at the study area, it is Issaquah, as I mentioned. And highlighted on this picture here, we have our primary evacuation routes and our secondary evacuation routes. So it should come as no surprise, the main, you know, thoroughfares are our primary, and the feeder routes are our secondary. Take note that this study also included the use of those emergency access roads that we typically have gates or bollards blocking. So James Bush is an example of that. And then a route that actually links up to Isquah Highlands, where they used to develop the neighborhood. We have a few different routes that we will open in the event of a wildfire, and they were accounted for within this study. So without further ado, here is the results from the, from the study. So this is a lot going on on this table. So let me take a moment to kind of discuss on what we're looking at here. So this is the time that it would take ninety percent of the population to evacuate the area. So first, let's start with that. So why ninety percent? Why not a hundred percent? Well, in our community survey, we had a wide range of people and their time that it would take them to get ready to evacuate, right? So I think the longest individual that we had through our community survey that said that they'd be ready for it would take them four hours to evacuate, right? And so that amount of time that it takes for that person to be ready to evacuate exceeds like the amount of congestion, if you will, right, on the traffic route, right? So ninety percent is a much more, it's a much more representative number of the actual reality for, for most people when we talk about evacuation. So we have a few different times in which we modeled. So we have a summer and a fall scenario. Really, the big difference there is in the summer, we have schools out, you know, no, no classes, but also visitors coming in to our many parks, something that we also collected data for. And then in fall, you know, we don't have the visitors as much, but what we have is a school, right? So that's really the two big differences between those seasonal categories. Then, much like, much like the seasons, we also have different times of days and the weekend, right? And really, that's to account for, are people home when this happens? Is it a workday? Are kids at home or not, right? So that's really the difference between the weekend, midday, midweek evening, and midweek midday. So that's how you can kind of read the top portion of this table. And then on the left, what you see is these breakdowns of these response areas that we have. They're just really groupings of neighborhoods. And a second, my next slide is actually the neighborhood specific times, and so I'm going to go ahead and just tab there now, because I think that's mostly how we operate, right? So in, like, on average, the, the, the most common time that it would take for our neighborhoods individually to evacuate is somewhere around two hours to two hours, five minutes. An all-city evacuation, it would take about two hours and twenty minutes for ninety percent of the population. But really, Isquah Highlands is the one that stands out there at two hours and fifty minutes. So Isquah Highlands is by far our most challenging neighborhood to evacuate. And due to its density and just limited number of egress routes, it is conducive there to be, you know, large congestions and bottlenecks in that neighborhood. So with that, we're going to take, take a look now at what, what the city looks like during an evacuation. So here, if you've ever used Google Maps, it's kind of similar, right? You can kind of see the red is the area where there's congestion. Yellow, it's kind of like a little bit of stop and go, and green is just like free flow of traffic. So this map shows what Isquah looks like at fifteen minutes after we say, okay, you know, an evacuation has been ordered, right? And so the city already has some traffic on it. So the, the study itself doesn't account like empty roadways when we begin, right? Because that's just not realistic in most of our scenarios. So as you can see on this map, you know, it's mostly the day-to-day traffic and the very, very prepared individuals who are ready to leave at a moment's notice, really. And so take note, the main areas where there's congestion is East Lake Samish, East Lakes Mamish Parkway and a little bit downtown in the valley and kind of around the I-90 on-ramp, which is pretty reflective, right, if you're driving around town on any given day. At thirty minutes is when things start to really get more congested in our downtown corridor and also around Costco. So Costco is another area that we found in this study that it gets congested very, very quickly due to their parking garages and just the limited numbers of routes that they have out of Costco, too. So that's another special consideration. We'll talk a little bit more later. If you look at our neighborhoods, right, you start to see Isquah Highlands is starting to get a little bit of traffic. But again, it's nothing, it's nothing too immense. One hour is when things really start to slow down in gridlock around the city. So SR-900 becomes completely jammed up. Isquah Hobart Road southeast becomes very congested. East Lakes Mamish Parkway, and of course, the Highlands. At an hour thirty, that's much the same. You'll note that the main change, though, is some of the traffic up in our other neighborhoods besides Highlands are actually starting to clear up around an hour and a half. Now, all the major ways outside of the city are still quite congested, but the neighborhoods start to clear up, again, the exception being Isquah Highlands. Two hours, it's much the same. As you see, if you'll recall from our table, most of the neighborhoods at this point, ninety percent of people have been able to evacuate, right? But Isquah Highlands is still, is still quite congested. Two hours and thirty minutes, looks similar. It's starting to ease up a little bit in Highlands, in the Highlands. And of course, three hours is when pretty much everything is cleared up.
So Jared, I think we have some questions about the maps.
Yeah.
Just a really clarifying question. Thank you for this. This is all under the assumption that only Isquah residents are being asked to evacuate. Is that right?
That and thirteen percent of, like, Samamish and unincorporated King County and Soqomish and a few others. So there is a thirteen percent shadow evacuation, is what they call it. So, yeah.
Okay, because like I'm, I'm even starting to think like downstream I-90, like when you get into East Gate, like what kind of impact is that going to have here? So that is accounted for in this thirteen percent shadow.
Yes. Yeah. I believe I shared the study with everyone, but if you can see back in that document, the shadow evacuation region is actually quite large. It accounts, I think, for, I think, fifty thousand odd vehicles that are not Isquah-related onto the roadways. So it's, it's a pretty representative number of what I think we could expect. And again, you know, this is a, this is a scientifically vetted process, right? This is something that is kind of an industry standard. And so I don't necessarily know where that thirteen percent number comes from, but I, it seems to be a best practice.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Jiang.
One question I had was, you know, in this scenario, what's the likely direction of evacuation? Because I see on the map, you know, it shows traffic on SR-900, Isquah Hobart Road, and Dothee Hill Road, but those all seem to, especially Dothee Hill Road seems to be going in the direction of more forests. So have we modeled, you know, oh, actually, if there's a fire on Tiger Road, you probably don't want to be driving right past it on Isquah Hobart Road and would be evacuating in a different direction? How would that affect things?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And so what I should say is, what you're seeing today, right, is this is really our best-case scenario, honestly, in terms of evacuation, right? This is if every route is available and, you know, traffic is actually able to flow. You think of the LA wildfires where there was issues with, you know, vehicles that were stalled and had to be cleared with like bulldozers and the like, right? And that would obviously very much impact our evacuation if certain routes get congested or cut off or in the case that we can't even use certain routes. So when we get to the scenarios, we actually had kind of a rationale for not modeling those situations first. Instead, I'll share with you the ones that we did before that. But I can go into that a little bit more and talk, talk about why we chose not to model blocked individual routes for our first wave of scenarios.
Any other questions? Okay.
So to highlight some of the key findings, of which there's many, this is a very rich document and one that we are still digesting, honestly, here on the administration side. But Newport Way Northwest, West Lake Samamish Parkway Southeast, East Lakes Mamish Parkway, Isquah Pine Lake Road Southeast, and Southeast Isquah Falls City Road, they'll have roundabouts kind of at the edges of our cities. And, and those impede rapid evacuation because there's a minimum or a maximum amount of speed that you can use to travel around them safely. So those routes in particular are a little bit more governed by those roundabouts and the speed that we can move people than necessarily even the, the, the capacity of the roadway, which I thought was very, very interesting. Front Street and SR-900 are the only two routes that they describe as ones that are available for rapid evacuation. That means ones that, you know, we could just like quickly, you know, have all the, the lights timed and the likes, lights timed in a way that we could quickly move people in one direction. But again, those go through some of our highest prone wildfire areas. So there's a chance that they may not be able to be usable in a wildfire. And then lastly, this one comes as no surprise, but I-90 quickly becomes congested. So we talked about accounting for the needs of people who do not have access to vehicles. And so here in this table, you see a summary of the transportation resources required broken into subcategories of the types of people who may need them. So school transportation, they only need ten buses. And if you're wondering, oh, that seems like a pretty low number, that's because ninety-seven percent of people in the community said that they would go pick up their kids from school. And I think that seems to hold up with, you know, parents in a situation like this. I think most kind of want to take, take that situation into their own control. Medical facility transportation needs, you know, there's buses, wheelchair buses, and ambulances needed. Transit-dependent transportation needs. So this accounts for our homeless community, but also those who do not have access to a vehicle. Need twenty-two buses for there. Oh, correctional facilities, sorry, skipped over that to account for the jail. And then access or functional needs, right? So this is people living in assisted living or other types of situations similar to that. You know, there's a, there's a large amount of buses, wheelchair buses, and ambulances all needed for that category. So there you can kind of see the total number of resources that we would need to evacuate people out of Isquah, of which it's a sizable number. But this is information that is really valuable for emergency response, right? Because in any response, if you go asking for buses, right, or any type of resource, they're going to ask you how many you need. And, and you know, we, we, we know how many we need.
So Jared, I, I ask you about the, the numbers of parents going to get their students. And we have such a concentration of schools right here. I think we have five that I can count. And so, and you, and there's only one road into Clark Elementary and Gibson Act, and one road out. So, so did, did this study model the congestion that would occur with all of these parents coming to get their children?
Yeah, so that was, that was an area, too, that we raised our eyebrow for a stat, right? Was do we just know on any given day where there's school pickup, right? They can grind the city to a hole in his transportation network. So we worked with the contractor to actually model increased demand on our schools, given the fact that we believe, you know, that will be the first place that people go before they, you know, prepare their home or do anything else to, to get ready for an evacuation. And so the findings or the results of that, I'm going to jump forward a little bit since we're on it. So the findings are, so for this is- So the findings are, so for this is for Isquah Middle School and Isquah High School. So accounting for, oh, sorry. Yeah, I guess I'm starting with Grand Ridge first. So Grand Ridge is another, is another school that also has, the congestion there can oftentimes spill over on a park, right, and create just even delays, you know, on a regular day getting around the city. And so accounting for the added demand on schools and the pickup challenges that we have, we see that that bumps up the estimated time for evacuation, 15 minutes in the Isquah Highlands. Now, keep in mind, this is the reason why this is like such a valuable study. If you look at the second row on this, you'll see that we can actually alleviate that additional demand from pickup by actually forcing parents to pick up their kids on College Drive. And so that keeps Park clear, right, and people can more quickly traverse that area. So that's a really operational, good planning, you know, gem that we have right from this study, is that we can make a meaningful difference that way. And then for more of the schools around here, specifically Isquah High School and Middle School, again, yeah, the increased demand also raised this area's evacuation time by about 15 minutes. And so, you know, we weren't able to come up with a positive solution yet for mitigating against that traffic, but that doesn't mean that we can't. So all this, I have a meeting with Isquah School District in a few weeks to talk about the results of this study and to really develop some next steps on how we can implement some of these findings that we have. Great question. Thank you. Okay. Great. Okay, I mentioned that, you know, we have employees and people commuting to Isquah, too, right? I just wanted to take a moment to highlight that it isn't just Isquah residents that we're counting for, too, right? It's also our many, many employees. I talked about Costco and the challenges that they have evacuating out of their parking garages, just due to the constraint nature of the roads around there. And so they are also going to be engaging with us, too, to see if there are some creative solutions that we can come up with to help reduce that stress. Talking about why this information matters to the public, these are two curves that you see on this slide. One is the amount, the percentage of, like, the amount of trips that have been generated, and then also the estimated time for evacuation. And so you'll look, right, if you are ready and you and your household are ready within 30 minutes, your time is going to be significantly less, right, getting outside of Isquah. So preparedness is going to be one of our key messages, you know, fall in this study is getting this information to the hands of our community. You know, we need to make sure that people don't have three-hour times, right, to get their household moving. You know, if that's the situation, it's just, it's much more bleak in a wildfire, right? So we want to encourage personal preparedness, and really, the results show, right, how much better it will be for that travel time. Another key message that we're rolling out to the community is really consolidating the number of vehicles that we're going to take in an evacuation, right? And a little bit of this is also butting up against human nature, right? But if you'll look, 66% of our respondents said they would take one vehicle, two said they would take about 28%, and three, 3.7% said they would take three or more. If we can, right, if we can fit, if we can encourage people to fit, you know, all their family into one vehicle, that's a message that we're going to try to bring, right? Because that reduces our congestion. Similarly, we also really want to encourage carpooling, right? Or if you have a neighbor who doesn't have access to a car or a vehicle, right, like, please, please grab them and bring them along in your car, because you saw the number of buses that we needed, right? That's a very challenging number, that it'll take quite some time to get King County Metro and Sound Transit to actually dispatch to that volume, right, out here. So some of those actions, right, like carpooling, minimizing our amount of vehicles that we're taking is really key for our community. Really, the bottom line, though, of everything, it's a capacity issue right here in Isquah. And, you know, I know that has been a common theme and something that's come up continuously, right, in the city in other ways, not even just wildfire evacuation, right? Traffic congestion is a major concern in the community, and for our wildfire evacuation, it's a similar limiting factor for us. So let's talk a little bit now about what we're going to do about it, right? We jumped forward a little bit, but I said that we have these scenarios that we can model. And so effectively, what these scenarios are, are ways that we can tweak that virtual model that was built by the contractor to really change the results that we get out of the model. And so the way that we decided that, for this first wave, that we decided what we were going to focus in on is situations that could really improve, improve things in Isquah. And when we were talking around the table with our planning group about closing certain routes and, you know, kind of modeling that change, we already know in some ways what's, what it's going to look like. We don't have the exact time, but we know it's going to be worse, right? And that's just intuitive. And so instead, we thought that we would spend our first wave of scenarios on, or is more investing in things that we hope will improve evacuations in the long term. Now, there's a lot of value in understanding, you know, the more worst-case scenarios, right? But we know, too, that there's probably equal amount of value in understanding, if not more, in understanding the things that we can do to actually help our community, right, in a permanent way. So that is our rationale for the first wave of scenarios. And again, at the end of this, we'd love to discuss if there's more that you all have ideas for. So I want to talk about near-term risk reduction first, and so the scenarios are a little bit baked into these slides, too, so I'll highlight them when we get to them. So these are the things that we're doing in the short term, right, to immediately reduce our risk. So we talked about the schools, so let's skip past that. We have a city evacuation exercise coming up. We're actually going to apply the learnings of, from this study, in a simulated way, right, to make sure that our response and our responders are prepared for an evacuation. And to this effect, it's not just the city of Isquah is participating in this. We have Eastside Fire and Rescue, Costco, Isquah School District, and many more. Gary Gold might even participate, too. And so, again, you know, the hope is that we take a more encompassing approach to this exercise, that we make sure that we're bringing a lot of people to the table. But, you know, this will be the first time, I think, that we'll really take a look at these results in the form of an exercise, and I think, I'm really curious to see how that plays out personally. We're looking at implementing variable evacuation signs at key locations in the city. So speaking of routes being closed or inaccessible, right, the ability to redirect and, like, provide real-time information to those evacuating is essential in a situation like this. And so the sign that you see on the right is an example of, is a sign that we are currently looking at to potentially, to get a little bit more information on if this could be something that we could implement here at the city of Isquah. The markers that you see on the left are just potential locations that were identified as maybe spots that would be, this would be beneficial for. So again, it's mostly, though, to share if a route is closed, right? That's really the main purpose of these. Static evacuation signs can be a little bit troubling for that reason, right? If you have a static sign that points someone down SR-900, but SR-900 is blocked off, right, you may end up making the situation worse. So that's why variable signs are important there. In terms of community outreach, so we're doing all the standard ones like social media, newsletters, and the likes. We're also in the process of updating our website to include the results of this evacuation study, again, in the hopes of preparing people so they can be ready to leave at a moment's notice. We're also going to develop a Story Map, if you're familiar with that product. If you aren't, it's a GIS web-based platform that shows, you know, a map inlaid with pictures and information. And the hope is that we're going to make neighborhood-specific regions in that Story Map, to where if you live on Squawk Mountain, right, you can quick-click on the Squawk Mountain neighborhood, and you can see the directions that you would take, locations that you could congregate for a bus pickup if you don't have access to transportation, and as well as just share some other helpful preparedness information. The thing that you, the image that you see on the right is a similar product that actually I made once upon a time for the Snoqualmie Valley for a toll dam failure. We, they had desire to do a similar process, so we hope to emulate something, something similar. So, oh, the last thing I'll say, too, about community outreach is there's a four-county initiative going on right now called Ready, Set, Go. And what this is, is it's an effort to create one common terminology around evacuation. And so, you know, having our evacuation levels be shared and not a 3-2-1 or 1-2-3, instead a Ready, Set, Go, if we can all agree upon that, it'll just make communicating more easy in a wildfire for our community. So we're also taking part in that initiative. Outreach has already started, I should say. So we had a lot of fun with Eastside Fire and Rescue doing two trivia nights around wildfire a few weeks ago. The image that you see on your left is from Gaslamp. We had about 40 people show up to our wildfire trivia night, which is a big success, honestly, for this type of content. And it was a really fun, approachable way to engage people in something that can be kind of inherently stressful. And we got really good feedback from everyone involved, including the business itself. They were really happy to have us. So it was a really fun time. And on the right, we were at Formula Brewing for the second event, and we had 27 people show up to that one, and fun was had by all. And again, yeah, a really good way, I think, to engage people with this content. We have two documentary screenings scheduled, so we're going to be screening the film Living with Wildfire. It's a 45-minute film on June 23 at the Train Depot and July 15 at Blakeley Hall. After the screening of the documentary, we're going to follow it up with a panel of not only local experts, but experts from other parts in Washington, including some firefighters who actually went down to the LA fires and fought them from Eastside Fire and Rescue. So there will be an opportunity to share, you know, some of the information that I just shared with you all, but also for the community to ask any other questions that, you know, they might have about wildfires. So if you're free, please attend. It should be fun. All right, let's talk about long-term risk reduction. So these are the projects, right, that, like, will permanently reduce our wildfire risk in Isquah. So the first set that we really focused on was Isquah Highlands. And the reason for that is because, as you all saw, it's really our neighborhood that has by far the highest ETE, right? So we wanted to drill down first into that neighborhood to try to implement solutions that would be effective. So we picked three areas where we simulated building new roads to help facilitate an evacuation. So the first one on the screen here is Grand Ridge Drive to 222nd Avenue Southeast. If you're not familiar with that road, it's the, it's like the High Point exit road is where it is. So that would give Isquah Highlands more access to I-90 through a secondary route. This next one is Northeast Natalie Way to Southeast Old Black Nugget Road.
Jared?
Yes.
We have a question.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Mart.
I think I've been up that road. It's extremely narrow and extremely steep.
Yes. Yes, and so...
It makes James Bush look like a freeway.
No, and so I should say, too, right, that these, so what we didn't necessarily do is like an environmental, you know, sensitivity study or more than just, we talked about it with some of the Public Works Engineering Team to see if there was, if it would even be feasible. We believe these routes to be feasible but challenging. So you're right in which it's not necessarily a high-capacity road, but it is something that we could consider, and there would be challenges to it, of course.
And does that orange bit exist currently?
No.
Or this would be something if we chose to...
Correct.
Invest in it.
Yes, yeah, that orange, that's it. Thank you for highlighting that. That orange bit is what we essentially were building, if you will, in the model. So that's connecting that Grand Ridge Drive to that, to that road that leads to the High Point entrance.
Oh, Council President Walsh has a question?
Yes.
Thank you. And on that, would that be an emergency road where you would need to remove the pillar in the middle of it to get access?
Yeah, correct. So all these would be just emergency, the vision for them at least, is all just emergency routes, right, that we would only open up in the event of something like a wildfire. But yeah, great point.
And so do you pull in estimates of how long it's going to take an emergency responder to get up there when everybody is trying to evacuate?
Yeah, so the key there, right, is we are working with Isquah Police Department, since they are always on scene and always on duty, to have keys to all of these service roads, the ones that exist, and these hypothetical ones as well. So as part of our wildfire evacuation exercise, I'm creating standardized checklists to where, you know, if we have a wildfire evacuation, you know, hopefully, every IPD officer has a checklist in their vehicle with them that says, "Open up, you know, Grand Ridge Drive to 222nd Avenue Southeast." So it's, the importance of opening up these routes has been shared with Public Works staff, with EFER and IPD, that this is really, it's a high priority, right? It's maybe the highest priority, honestly, during our evacuation.
And we might also just give those residents keys that are there. I mean, I think that, you know, Council President's point's a very valid one, and I think, you know, if we were to pursue something like this, I think we would have to look at multiple avenues for making that road accessible in an emergency. So before moving, I just want to...
Yeah.
Say we're not going to wait for one of the four police officers on duty in the midst of evacuation to run up there and unlock that, that that may not be the most realistic scenario. So we pursue this, we'll come up with more realistic scenarios.
Great, thank you. Council President, do you have any more questions? Okay. Councilwoman Mart has a question.
Does it make things substantially more complicated that this stretch, unlike the others that you're talking about, are not within the boundaries of the city of Isquah?
Yeah, and so it would require an agreement, right, with the community up there, and I believe that is a private road, right? Yeah. So again, you know, these are, there's no golden, golden solution, right? But these are challenges that, again, in the long term, we can actually work towards, you know, if we want to, if we want to spend the time and invest in these, these are potential solutions that could help alleviate our time. But again, yeah, there's just, it's a challenge, right? And there's no magical answer, unfortunately, that'll solve our problem here.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you. So the second route that we modeled was Northeast Natalie Way to Southeast Old Black Nugget Road. So there's already a roughed-in line there from, or road there from Bonneville Power Administration. So it, conceivably, it could be pretty easy to just continue connecting that to Old Black Nugget Road. Then following that same kind of line from Old Black Nugget Road all the way to Southeast Isquah Falls City Road. So that spans the North Fork of the Isquah Creek. And so that kind of connects, you know, across the way there, right, instead of having to filter all the way down through Park and the like, right? You can just cut right across, right across to Southeast Isquah Falls City Road. So the results of all those routes are showed here on this slide. And so Grand Ridge Drive to 220, 220, sorry, 272nd Avenue, that's a 35-minute decrease in evacuation time estimate. So that is a very meaningful change, right? That is a significant decrease in time. Northeast Natalie Way to Southeast Old Black Nugget Road is 10 minutes, and then similarly to Southeast Isquah Falls City Road is about 30 minutes. So those are all impactful changes that we could consider and, you know, could look into further to reduce our long-term risk of impacts of wildfires, specifically to the Highlands The next, the next set that we looked at was Squawk Mountain Loop to Idlewood Drive Southwest. So Forest Rim is one of our communities that is, it only is one way in and one way out. And so that is the type of situation and the type of community that we really want to prioritize and making sure that there's additional ways of egress outside of them. So we decided to model a route out of that community. Now, you'll notice that the time estimate didn't change, right, as a result of this change, and that's just, you know, due to the demographic nature, right, of the size of that community compared to the rest of the neighborhood. But the study actually highlighted that the way that it interplayed with some of the other congestion patterns in the city was a more even distribution that helped minimize some of the bottlenecks in some of the other parts of the city. So that in itself is worthwhile, and like I said, I mean, any community with one way in and one way out is significantly a challenge and something that we want to take a hard look at. So with that, those were the scenarios that I mentioned that we modeled. So I want to talk a little bit about our timing and next steps. And so this summer, I was actually already at the Transportation Advisory Board, and I brought this information, too, and they had some interesting feedback for me. We're going to have our evacuation exercise and really, you know, focus on this community outreach, making sure that we get this information in the hands of our, of our community. Of all, we're going to do a little bit of scoping around those signs and understand if that's a viable solution, and if not that, you know, something similar, of course. We hope to do some additional evacuation scenario development in fall as part of a grant opportunity that is available. We can seek some more funding to do more, more modeling with our contractor, and then, of course, start building our Story Map. In the winter, hopefully, we can get those signs installed, and then we'll have the results of the additional scenarios. Beyond, we have a Community Wildfire Protection Plan coming up. That is a King County-led plan of which EFER and the fire departments all annex on to, and then within the fire departments where... then within the fire departments were involved. So that plan is currently underway. We've had some, had a few planning meetings on it, and they're doing a lot of community outreach around that plan currently right now. One thing I want to note is, what'll be interesting, one of the products of that plan, they actually model what wildfires will look like in the region. So at that point, you know, we've modeled what the evacuation will look like, but at the conclusion of that plan, we'll have more information on what a potential wildfire could look like in our community, right? Taking into fact things like the vegetation, the slope, just our development and the likes. So we're very interested in the product of that. We're also concluding our hazard mitigation plan. If you're unfamiliar with this plan, it's a five-year plan that really tells or prescribes like what we're going to do in the long term to reduce our risk, so of which some of these, some of these road improvements are going to be included in that plan. But there may be other options outside of improving our evacuation that may be worthwhile for wildfire.
Yeah, I forgot.
And then finally, yeah, we're going to take a closer look at some of those long-term projects to see, again, if they're feasible and viable. So with that, does the City Council have any additional ideas for wildfire evacuation risk reduction scenarios that the administration should consider?
Right, so usually we start with questions. And let me ask Council President Walsh, is your hand raised from the last time, or did you have a question that you wanted to ask? Oh, oh, good, okay. Councilmember Martz.
Does the city have the plans in place right now, what to do if on a day with a high-fuel load, a fire starts on the far side of Squawk Mountain or the far side of Tiger Mountain?
Yeah, so we do have a standing evacuation plan. We're currently in the process of refining it with using the study to kind of update it and bring in the newest information. But absolutely, you know, we will be able to respond effectively if a wildfire were to start, you know, tomorrow. But what this does is this really brings us, I think, to a, to the next level of our response, and it gives us a lot better information to work from.
Just to follow up on that, do the plans consider, for instance, recommending like departing on foot versus, you know, in scenarios in a, in a fast-moving fire? It might be that the recommendation wouldn't be to evacuate, but you reach a point where, and I say this, of course, as someone who lives 1,000 feet up Squawk, you know, there's all sorts of scenarios where you should just set off on foot down the mountain.
Right, you know, and we haven't necessarily identified when that is, I think, you know, for communities, right, or like a trigger where we would recommend something like that. You know, a good, a good challenge for us, right, something that we are actively thinking about is, is really trying to prevent the situations in which that has to happen, right? So you take those LA wildfires, right, and you had people evacuating on foot because traffic got, you know, completely stopped by blocked vehicles. So, so that's something where, okay, we take that information and we're like, okay, we need to, we need to be sure that we can clear vehicles that are either stalled or impeding an evacuation, right? So evacuation plan more speaks to actions like that, I would say, less than like a necessarily trigger where we would say, you know, this is the moment where, you know, yeah, I think you should try to walk out or something like that.
Because I've talked to EFER about this many years ago, and I know that they envision scenarios where you tell people to shelter in place, which is not something, that's a, that is a situation where you are down to bad options.
Yes, indeed, yeah. And the shelter in place option, exactly, it is, it is one where, yeah, it is, there's no viable, really, way to evacuate, right, safely, that is. And, you know, another good example is like healthcare facilities, right? Typically, they find themselves sheltering in place because, you know, if you're moving the whole patient load from Swedish, that's a, that's a huge challenge. And I think, you know, there is more room for us to explore what that would look like. And in Issaquah, and even recommendations right around when we would feel a location is safe enough to do something like that, I think it's still just this gap that we don't, you know, currently have completely figured out for Western Washington, right? For our drive force, more so, but for our situation, I think it's something that we could explore more.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Jared, for this presentation. It's been enlightening and somewhat frightening at the same time. Let's go back to the reader board subject. Could you clarify, you indicated that some of the reader boards, if they're static, would cause more trouble than they're worth, or something like that. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so the challenge with static evacuation signs, right, is, you know, typically the way they look, right? If you can imagine a circle that says wildfire evacuation route, and it's like an arrow pointing down SR-900. Now, SR-900, let's just say, an hour and a half into wildfire evacuation, let's just say, you know, the fire was on Squawk or Cougar. After a while, firefighters are going to say, "This route is no longer safe for vehicular travel to continue in this direction." Now, if you're a community member who's left two hours, right, after, from their home, and you see a sign up there, maybe illuminated or something, that says wildfire evacuation route, turn right, say, "Perfect," right? We're in a wildfire, I'm turning right. You know, little, little does the resident unfortunately know that they're, you know, driving into, into a more challenging situation. And, you know, obviously, the counterpoint to that, right, is like, well, maybe through traffic control measures, right, we would block off that road, and then, you know, it would be, it wouldn't be as obvious, right, to make that, that choice. But given the fast-moving nature of some of these wildfires, there's no really guarantee that we'll have resources always available to man every single type of traffic barricade or every type of traffic revision. And so if we can have variable signage, right, that we can program or access from an alternate location and adapt it to real-time information, it's just, I think, a better solution for, for that type of scenario.
Okay, I was thinking about the variable signs today. Has there been a discussion with the school district to perhaps use Isquah Valley Elementary's variable sign and the high schools' variable sign in the event of an emergency to give additional information to people that are trying to find the safest rate out, route out, excuse me?
That's a, that's a great question. We have not actually broached that topic with them, but that is something that I'll follow up with them on when we meet them.
Please look into that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I had a question about signs too. So I think I buy the argument that a dynamic signs were able to adapt easier in the moment during evacuation. Do we see the benefit, or is there a complementary nature of having static signs in addition in like kind of the, like when you're not in evacuation mode? I mean, I think of like the Smokey, the Bear signs, right? Low, medium, high, fire risk, like, is that common to see in kind of urban settings, just in terms of like, where should your headspace be right now, given the fire risk in the area?
Yeah, certainly, like, I think more of those that kind of public education signs, yeah, are something that is beneficial. Actually, part of that community wildfire protection plan, once we, once we get through that process, we can actually put up little like signs that say like, "Fire-ready, community" and things like that. That kind of serves as a soft reminder. And I think that, yeah, that'll kind of speak, that'll maybe accomplish some more of that, just public awareness around, oh, yeah, wildfire is something that we need to live with here, you know, in our community. And I should say, the variable signs too, you know, they're pretty advanced, right? So if there is other pertinent like community information, right, if we do have a red-flag day, you know, we could say something like, "Wildfire risk high," you know, today, or something like that, you know, avoid burning, or like check your chains on, for dragon chains, things like that, right? So that is an added, an added advantage of a technology solution like that.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. Two questions. In the case of an emergency or evacuation period, would we be able to change the traffic light timing? And particularly, I'm wondering about those traffic lights that are near the on-ramps for I-90, since I know we coordinate those with the state, or as ways to prioritize like the primary evacuation routes?
Yeah, absolutely. So signal timings can be changed through our traffic control center. Those are the ones that we own, of course. Now, as you mentioned, you know, WashDOT does maintain ownership of some of those key ones. So they're also invited to our wildfire evacuation exercise to kind of hammer out just this, actually, and the coordination of those signal timings. That's something that, you know, would obviously serve us very well in a wildfire evacuation and something that we're pursuing.
And then for the dynamic signs idea, have we considered, or would we have the option to utilize multiple languages, or is it just an English option?
Yeah, you know, I haven't had those official sit downs yet with like the, the people who sell them, right? But I would imagine so, at least from the examples that I've seen, you know, they're used really all over the world in different forms. So I'm sure we could definitely develop some prescriptive messages that we could, that we could portray on those boards, but that's something I will ask when we have those initial scoping meetings.
All right, does anybody else have a question? Councilmember Joe and then Councilmember Jane.
Sometimes during natural disasters, they'll open up freeway lanes that are going the opposite direction. Have we thought about opening up both lanes of Isquah Hobart Road, for example, to let just everyone go down there and head away from the fire, or other roads that might fit that bill?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great question. It's one that I would say we're still, we're still trying to figure out which roads that would actually be viable on. Really, the challenge with that is you're preventing ingress if you do something like that, so supporting elements from fire jurisdictions from around the area, right? If we have something happening in Isquah, we're going to be pulling from Maple Valley south, you know, east, really, everywhere we can get them. And so when you contraflow a road like that, you know, you need to be very intentional about making sure that there still is good access into your community. And so that's just a, that's another level, right, and kind of another level of planning that we will get to at some point. Currently, we don't know the safest roads to do that with, and two, there is some challenges as well, right, just making sure that the road can actually, you know, accommodate travel in an opposite direction without there being too many other issues. So it's something we've talked about a little bit, but something that we will explore more in the future.
This might be an ignorant question, but, you know, for me as a resident, how would I be notified that I need to evacuate?
Oh, no, that's a, that's a great question. So Alert King County is our preferred method for emergency notification. If you're going to be signed up for one platform for anything emergency-related, Alert King County is a shared resource that all the cities, including the county, uses within, within King County to notify people of emergencies. And the way that those emergency messages are delivered are through text, call, email, TDD, in 13 different languages at this point, and you can add as many phone numbers as you want. We can geo-target certain areas. Good examples with water main break, we actually sent out a code red message, or alert King County message, to the residents that were impacted by that water main break just over a couple of weekends ago, that, that they're, you know, that, of a situation going on. So Alert King County is the best way. Now, we will use many and every type of platform that we have available for us in an event like this. We call it the Swiss cheese method, right? We know that one, like, one method of communication will not cover everyone, right? So the more like layers that you put on top of each other, you close the hole. So that looks like social media, news, you know, even a blaring siren, right, going down the highway, right, is something that kind of takes people off to letting them know something's going on, and always encouraging people to share with their neighbors and their community, right, that something's happening is, is something that will help us too.
So do you have to sign up for Alert King County to get the texts?
You do. So one of the other methods of communication that we would use in an event like a wildfire is something called wireless emergency alert. If you've ever gotten an Amber Alert on your phone, that is what that technology is. And so if you have public safety alerts enabled on your phone, you will, you will get, or you should get a wireless emergency alert. Now, again, that's just one method, and that's just text, and that only goes out in English and Spanish, and so it's a little bit more limited, but that is another thing that we will use in our back pocket. But Alert King County is a much more surefire way to get notified, especially two, the way that those wireless emergency alerts are initiated. They draw polygons around a certain area, and once they hit launch, if you're not in that polygon, then you will not receive that information. So if you were at work, per se, outside of the area, and there was something happening in Issaquah, you might not know.
Thanks, super interesting. I never knew how Amber Alerts worked.
No problem.
All right, any further questions from anyone? So I did have one, and that's, you know, we have all the bus vehicles and all of that figured out. Are there strategic places throughout the plan where a human being might be important to direct traffic, or could be a police officer, could be a cert, could be, is that built into this plan?
Mm-hmm, and so that, so that is something that we could study more. So we can simulate, you know, putting a traffic control individual at key intersections to essentially function as like a stoplight would, right, letting certain people go. But in our first discussions, when we were talking about what we wanted to model first, the key finding of it primarily being like a capacity issue, we, in talks with like the contractor as well, they said that like it might not end up impacting it as, like, or decreasing the amount of time to evacuate as much as you think it would, only because it's really just the capacity problem, right? It's not like the efficiency of the flow that's the issue, per se.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is something that we could explore, you know, in the future too.
Great. All right, any more questions? All right, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment?
No one has signed up. We do still have someone with us virtually, so if they'd like to comment, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand by pressing star three. Not seeing an indication.
Does anyone in the room want to make public comment? Going, going, gone. Okay, so we have the question before us. Does the City Council have additional ideas for wildfire evacuation risk reduction scenarios that the administration should consider? Who would like to start off? Councilmember Joe.
One thought that, that I had is, looking at this entire plan, Puget Sound Energy goes through and they cut down the trees that are going to impede or have a chance of falling down and taking out a power line. Have we thought about, as a city, going through some of our major routes and clearing brush away from the, the roads like we are advised to do for the WUI wildland, wildland urban interface around our homes? Have we considered moving some of the brush away from the side of the road so that there's less of a chance that that road could be impacted by either falling trees blocking it, or just fire and smoke going across it because there's less burnable fire material along, along those roads? And that's just one suggestion. I know that's probably, the cost is really high and the benefit may be really low, but just one thought that, that I had as I was looking at the material.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great consideration, and something that we could certainly explore more, honestly. And I think just understanding too, the cost and the areas in which we'd want to do that, I think is probably a good next step for something like that, because again, yeah, that's, that's mostly been the way that we've approached it in the past, is just that the cost to maintain, to maintain that may be prohibitive, but in certain key areas, it certainly seems like it's worth looking into.
And then just one last comment on this. Really appreciate the information that's there. I think that the message that we got was, this plan can help, but a lot of it is dependent on the individual to be ready with that go-bag, to get in their car in that first 30 minutes and try to get out of harm's way along the way. And I think the more we can stress that at the trivia nights or any education events that we have, I think our citizens would be willing to do that preparation when they understand how that curve works and the risk increases substantially should they be caught in, in the city. So, thank you.
Councilmember Martz.
I think we've talked before, it's my understanding that, on the west side of, of the pass, that the risk from, the wildfire risk over here is considered higher from building fires being the inception points versus lightning. And so I say, as a member of the board on Eastside Fire and Rescue, are there things that we can and should be doing in, operationally, on these high-fuel load days, on these high wind load days, so that if there was a house fire that's burning hot, we can help make sure that we reduce the risk of inception of a, of a major fire on, on one of these mountains?
Yeah, absolutely, right? The thing, the thing actually that causes wildfires to spread isn't necessarily the flames, it's the embers, right? And so controlling a fire and aggressive tactics on them is certainly key. You know, I'm sure that Eastside Fire and Rescue probably has specific recommendations even too, right, on how to minimize that risk.
I'm just wondering if there's gear that can be involved, right? Investments that can be made in foam technologies or whatever. My understanding is foams can... My understanding is foams can be very effective in helping reduce the spread of embers and whatnot. So should we be as a city, should we be talking to EFER about those sorts of investments as part of this conversation?
Yeah, that's a, you know, that conversation has not happened yet between EFERI, but I'm, I'm really happy to look into that more and follow up with them on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Council President Walsh, would you, would you like to make a suggestion?
Well, sure. If I'm being called out, I will do so. You know, I, I will just take a moment to advocate for the Highlands. Seeing the large difference in the evacuation estimate times between that neighborhood and others was really surprising for me. I mean, I know as a resident up there that when we have traffic in front of the schools or other things like that, that it is very difficult getting down. So I think I would be very interested in pursuing things that would potentially look at long-term improvements there. And so I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hall?
I guess just really quick, and I don't know if it's, it's helpful. Because I feel like even during questions, we provided some feedback, like the school signing, science was like a really good idea. For like alternate roads, for like some of these longer term solutions too, I feel like part of, part of that will be people recognizing that they're there in the first place and being comfortable using them too. So it's almost like we also need to consider some element of permanently opening some of these roads, right? Like if we're looking at Black Nugget Road, like people need to know it's there and they know how to go down that road and they're comfortable doing it and they've done it before. So I don't know. I, I feel like perhaps even a conversation too alongside these alternate evacuation paths is, or does it just make sense to open the road to the community as like an additional, normal, everyday egress? So it's probably something for us to just chew on as we, as we continue to have this conversation because people are creatures of habit, right? If they don't necessarily know or haven't driven down Black Nugget Road like they're going to go down Park and Highlands Drive. So I don't know. That's just kind of one thought I have.
Anyone else? Okay, a couple of thoughts. I did, I like the idea of our having signs out there saying, hi, wildfire risk. I think Councilmember Jane and I both were, expressed a little bit of concern about early warnings or how we might handle, handle letting people know that something's coming. And that sounds to me like a good solution to that. And then that would also keep it on the top of people's minds as we get into wildfire season. So the other thing, I'll go back to what I was asking about. It seems to me like if you've got human beings out there with some kind of official designation, again, maybe a police officer, maybe somebody with a cert jacket or, you know, some kind of official, it may not be any more efficient, but there's a, a factor of keeping people calm and assured that people are in charge. And so I kind of would like us to explore what kind of situations, what would be appropriate. You know, we don't want people getting caught in the wildfires, doing that volunteer service or something like that. So it needs to be explored in depth a little bit more. But I think that might be a critical factor just in keeping people calm. And hey, we can get through this and get it, we can get out of town. So those are my suggestions. Anybody else want to provide any more? Councilmember Jane?
One thing I'd be interested in seeing is, you know, if there's any way, because I mean, basically this modeling shows that, oh, there's going to be tons of traffic. I wonder if there's any way, you know, to get some public transit vehicles to be like, hey, here's the spot to meet up if you want to get on the bus. Even, you know, have like some confirmation that it's going to be faster. Because people don't want to like drive sitting in traffic for three hours or whatever. And that can also, you know, take more cars off the road, make it just smoother for everyone. And especially, you know, the school district has all their buses at the base in Isaguah. That could be something that we could partner with them on. So I'd be interested to see, you know, some analysis that incorporates that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Marts?
So incident command on a fire that incorporates our city and unincorporated King County, who would be the lead on that?
Yeah, so that, so it'd be a unified command situation in that aspect. So it's a collaborative approach in the instant command system. Everyone kind of owns a piece of it. Another part of it is to, in, in large wildfires, if it's far enough away, there will be a fire incident management team that actually, you know, manages the wildfire fighting response, especially if it starts in like DNR land, for example, or state lands. And so in that case, what more what it looks like, right, is we're a component of that, of that instant command system and that unified command area. And so it's a shared, kind of a shared ownership there.
Yes. So we stress test those comm systems and the command systems and decision-making and all that for things like Cascadia Rising, for a subduction fire. Do we stress test those systems for urban wildland interface fire?
Yeah, and I think that's part of what this July exercise is going to be, right? And spoiler alert for some of the people in the room that are partaking in it, you know, there's a lot of individuals who can actually authorize an evacuation for Isaguah, right? And so what if someone breaks from that, you know, chain outside of that unified command system, right? How to re respond to, to someone, you know, being a little maybe preemptive, right? Making that decision preemptively. And so to answer your question, yes, you know, but honestly, every, every exercise, you learn so much more, right? And so I, me personally, as emergency manager, I'd say we can never do too many exercises. Maybe Wally disagrees. But you know, from where I stand, yes, like we, yes, should be stressing that specifically for a wildfire as it's one of our hazards too, that we don't have as much, you know, here.
And will you be coming back and telling us after that exercise how it went?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's something that the council would benefit from.
I know a committee that would be very interested.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Right. I see. The city administrator, did you want to contribute?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Council President. A lot of information for you this evening. From the administration's standpoint, I always want to go through a couple of things that we plan to do over the next three months or so. And I think we can commit to come back with an update in September or October from the work that we've done this summer. The variable signs, I think, is probably the most impactful thing that this report brings up. And so we are going to move expeditiously. There are six on the map that you should have seen this evening, so we're going to start there. And maybe working with our IT staff and Jared and make that happen as quickly as possible. So you may see us coming back to you with a budget request for that. You know, my estimation is of all the things you've heard tonight, that's probably the most impactful thing that we can do. The education pieces with Alert King County, enable the emergency alerts on mobile phones, the educate your own preparedness. You know, we're going to continue to look for creative ways to do that. You know, we, we hesitate to do direct mail because of the cost and because people don't read mail regardless of the content. We may rethink that for this in order to come up with some key messages there. So that's what we're going to be focusing on over the next few months, again, with the exercise that Jared described. We want to keep talking about this. It's important, I think, to keep talking about this with you, with the larger community. There are no easy answers. There is no easy fix. But communication is probably the single most impactful thing we can do. And you have Mayor Polly's commitment, the administration's commitment to continue to move forward with that. So again, Jared, thank you for your leadership. Thank you, members of the council, for your input tonight. And we'll come back in September, October with the next update.
Wonderful. Thank you. Jared, thank you. Always a very thorough and informative presentation. Really appreciate the work that went into this. So thank you very much. Just one last round, make sure everybody has had a chance to provide all their suggestions. Okay? Council President Walsh, yep. All right. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
And our next item on the agenda is COM 0102, 2027 to 2032 Capital Improvement Plan. And it's going to be presented by Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder.
Good evening, City Council. I am Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder. And we are here to talk about the CIP. This is our once every two-year update to the CIP. We have already talked about specific asset category types within each of the council committees. So this is our opportunity to bring all of those conversations together as a whole and consider the CIP document as a whole and some of the decisions and policy choices that are within that document. So tonight, we ask for some feedback and specific direction from you. Of course, we always want to hear feedback from you, any type of feedback you have to offer. But specifically tonight, we're hoping to hear from you on any feedback about the priority of maintenance over new assets within the CIP, the transportation priorities focusing on light rail and projects that support light rail, this conversation over large-scale visionary projects, projects that have a high impact, but also very high cost and are very long-term versus smaller projects that are more immediate impacts, but smaller impacts and also smaller costs associated with those. Also facilities maintenance, there's a lot more facilities maintenance in this CIP than in previous CIPs in recognition that we have really been trying to figure out what our, our needs are in facility maintenance. And we also, as the administration, feel as though we've kicked the can down the road far too many times when it comes to our facilities and delaying facilities projects at this point. We don't feel is a really good option. So we wanted to understand if council had any more feedback on that. Also notably wanted to pull out that the IPD renovations in City Hall are in the CIP just as they were in the last version of the CIP and that those costs are beginning in 2027. And any other feedback this council may have on parks, IT or utilities types of infrastructure? So wanted to pull out a couple of themes and changes of this CIP versus past versions of, of the CIP. One is that needs continue to outpace the revenues. We talked about that a lot during the budget season. The same is true in our capital planning. And specifically more competition for general fund revenues and the real estate excise tax, while also anticipating fewer federal grants and other types of funding. With, as we all know, the future feels a little bit uncertain at this point in terms of the economy, but also escalating costs of certain types of infrastructure projects that may be related to tariffs. And so knowing that this CIP covers 2027 and beyond, planning for the future is difficult and more difficult than it's really ever been. And so therefore, we're keeping the updates pretty simple and the process simple this round, knowing that we have next year in the budget drafting process where we anticipate knowing a little bit more about what a revenues might look like and we can focus on making some decisions then. Also, as I said before, one of the main themes of this CIP is prioritizing maintenance and those replacement programs versus new assets. This is direction that we've heard from the council from previous years, making sure that we're accounting for our maintenance. And that's something that we've emphasized in the CIP as well. Also, just wanted to point out that the additions to this CIP capture the latest in the utility rate study. There are updates to the utility sections that council should already have seen in other conversations regarding utility rates, including the new water treatment plant, which is something we've discussed in the past and is a large expense that's going to be hitting our water utility within the frame of the CIP, the timeline of the CIP. This CIP departs from previous CIPs in that typically we have had the first two years of this CIP really try to be as balanced as possible when it comes to anticipated revenues and anticipated expenses. And this is the first CIP that departs from that trend. We have way more needs than what we have identified funding for throughout the CIP, but certainly for the first two years. Some of the reason for this is because we're in ongoing conversations about potential new revenues, like we've talked about with City Hall and IPD renovations, for example. And also because we know that putting projects in our CIP is an important way to be able to be eligible for grant funding. And so we have projects in there that we're hoping to receive grants on. Whether we are able to fund those projects depends on our success of achieving those grants. But that said, this CIP is not just a wish list. We did vet the projects in this CIP. We wanted it to be more realistic than a complete, a wish list or fantasy. And so what we've done to try to get the expenses down and more match the anticipated revenues is we've reduced scope of projects, we phased some of these projects out, pushing some of those phases out in the timeline, pushed whole projects out, including out to future years beyond the timeframe of the CIP. We've moved projects to more stable funding or other types of funding sources. And again, keeping that priority where we have more choices on maintenance over constructing new assets. So next I wanted to go over what some of those policy questions were to each of the committees and review some of the feedback that we've heard from those committees so that all of council has an understanding of what those conversations were. For the Planning Development Environment Committee, their focus is really restricted to stormwater projects in the CIP. So we reviewed those, especially as suggested by the rate study. This committee, the committee of the whole, had given previous feedback on late winter, early spring, talking about stormwater projects and really looking at reducing the increase of the stormwater rates by focusing on what are the most urgent projects available. We took that feedback and we used it in the drafting of the CIP. So when PDE reviewed those stormwater projects, they were largely in support of those projects and reinforced the desire to delay less critical projects in order to reduce that increase in stormwater rates. Services Safety and Parks Committee. We talked about facilities. As I said before, there's a lot more maintenance within the facility section of the CIP. The committee said they were largely in support, but acknowledged that there are still tough decisions that we have to make as part of the budget process because we simply cannot afford all of the needs that we anticipate. Timing and funding for the Isaguah Police Department and City Hall Facilities Projects. The committee is generally in support of this prioritization, though still had concerns about those funding sources because we have yet to identify those. And also, they requested an update on the Public Safety and Civic Facilities Task Force. That was in your packet. And essentially, the, the task force has a few meetings left, including tomorrow, to provide their recommendations. The proposed parks, trails and facilities IT projects, the feedback that we received on those is that the committee was largely in support, but again, still have some concerns about how we were to fund those projects. And there was a desire to complete the vision of Confluence Park. So since we first published the CIP, the proposed CIP, there have been some small adjustments that the administration has made, including adjusting the contingency art fund contribution and inflation on some projects to make sure we had a consistent approach across the CIP. No scopes or timelines were changed as a result of this. But there were some changes to anticipated expenditures that hit the general fund, Schools on Safety Fund and Sustainability Fund, as outlined on this slide. Again, the CIP is a plan. It's not a budget. And so there's a lot more decisions that we need to be making really next year in the budget drafting process. So this timeline should look familiar of we, as I said, we have met with all of the committees to discuss the specific asset types under the purview of each committee. Today is June 16th, trying to get general feedback from the city council. And we hope for potential adoption on June 16th. for potential adoption on June 23rd. The reason why we're hoping for adoption on June 23rd is that Washington state law requires us to have an annual update to the Transportation Improvement Plan and by July 1st. And the Transportation Improvement Plan is a component of the CIP.
Andrea, did you cover the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee feedback?
You know, thank you, council member. I might have inadvertently skipped over it. Let me go back here.
I don't remember you going over it, but maybe I dozed out. I don't know. But I, because we were talking specifically about the light rail, and I know that there was some comments on that from council members.
Right. This is exactly when I will experience tech issues, just to make it more difficult.
Great.
So let me just walk through it verbally, since I'm having a hard time sharing my slides. I apologize. I do think I inadvertently skipped over it, double-clicked or something. So, and now it's refusing to cooperate. So Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, thank you, council member, or Deputy Council President. We asked a couple of questions, including prioritizing maintenance and light rail-related projects. Those light rail-related projects include much of the station area planning, but also the I-90 crossing that is to be constructed and coincident to the light rail station. Thank you, Tisha. And the committee feedback was generally supportive of prioritizing maintenance and light rail-related projects. Boy, that's hard to say. But also had some concern about the ability to complete these visionary projects like the I-90 crossing. We do not have funding identified for that. So we had a larger conversation about these visionary projects that are high impact but also very high cost and long-term over smaller-scale projects that have smaller impacts but are more immediate and certainly less costly. And so examples of these types of projects, those long-term visionary projects, would be the I-90 crossing. And then smaller projects would be things even like you would consider maybe the PMP or Pavement Management Program or other smaller-scale types of transportation projects. And the reason why we're having this conversation is because we are concerned about a lack of revenues. We cannot fund everything that we would like to fund, and so there are some real choices that council will have to make, certainly in the budget process. And so if council remains committed to funding these large-scale visionary projects in a certain year, but maybe the ability to pay for the completion of these projects is not yet identified, there will be some other projects we can't complete. So we have to make choices, and there's trade-offs to those choices. So we had a discussion about that at the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, and what we heard was concern from the committee members about investing in projects that maybe we cannot guarantee the completion of because we lack the funds and we have not identified those funds. One of those longer-term projects and somewhat visionary projects, certainly very high-dollar, is some of the Newport projects, Newport Way projects. These are projects the city has been working on for a long time. The Newport Way Maple to Sunset project in particular is one that we made some changes to versus the last version of the CIP, and we have delayed that project and the timing of that project in order to try to be able to afford it in future years. And we heard support from the committee in doing that. Other things that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee discussed were the proposed water and sewer projects, and we heard general support for those projects, and that we heard strong support, especially for the sewer extension and the water treatment plant. So I apologize for skipping over that slide. Thank you, Deputy Council President. Going back to, if you could, City Clerk, the next steps again would be adoption on June 23rd, and specific direction needed, prioritizing maintenance over new assets, if there's feedback from council on that. The transportation priorities, projects that support light rail, any feedback you have on the question of large-scale visionary projects versus smaller, more immediate projects, and how we should prioritize those. Facilities maintenance, and then the IPD renovations and City Hall construction, or rather, the costs beginning in 2027, and any other feedback that council may have on the CIP.
Great, thank you. We'll start with questions and council member Marts.
Can you talk about the status of Northwest Semamish Road non-motorized improvement projects?
Yes, it is still in the CIP. I am gonna forget the exact date of when we are constructing it, but it is still in relation to the Washington, the WashDOT project. So we have to complete the WashDOT project, and then we will begin work on that. And I do have Director Moon here who's trying to mouth the date to me. 2028 is when it's in the plan. So it is still there, and as you may recall, council had passed the Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax, and we have anticipated using the revenues from that tax to help fund the debt service on that project.
So, so we are intending to build it in 2028?
That's correct.
It's not just a placeholder?
It's not just a placeholder. We are intending to build it in 2028. There are still opportunities to make changes to that plan. For example, if there's delay in WashDOT projects that cause us to delay that project, or if at a future council decision, the future council may also choose not to fund that project and prioritize something else.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I also had some questions on Northwest Semamish Road, so you helped me out there. Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Although it's 2027 and 2028, right? I thought I saw some funding in both columns there, right? Okay. Does this, actually, first question, does this count as a large visionary project? Is this something we should be weighing in that space or not?
So, it's a good question. It is a high-dollar project. When we're thinking about these larger other projects, if you look at transportation funding and transportation projects, what are going to be high-cost projects? I-90 crossing is one of those that we haven't identified funding for, and we're not sure about our ability to get grants for that project. So for me, that is the project that's really at the top of the list. And then what is still unknown is our ability to provide a match for sound transit if we need to provide a match for the, anything that's light rail-related or some of the city projects that would be in support of a light rail project. The Northwest Semamish non-motorized improvements, still very high cost. Those dollars we anticipate to come from the TBD sales tax, so we have an identified funding source for that. But with every project we fund, there are projects that it means necessarily we're not going to fund just because we lack the revenues to fund everything. So for example, for Northwest Semamish non-motorized improvements, that using TBD sales tax money, we also anticipated the ITS projects or intelligent transportation system projects to come out of that source of funding. So it could be that in the years that we're paying off the debt service for Northwest Semamish, non-motorized improvements, that maybe we're doing fewer ITS-related projects.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That really helps put that in perspective. And then, are we as confident as we can be at this point in time, also knowing that this is a planning document, that this is what we would, this is what we would need, or this is what we anticipate needing to spend on construction of the non-motorized improvements? This would capture everything?
These are our best estimates to date.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question about Fire Station 71. So in the previous CIP, funding is identified there as coming from fire mitigation and impact fees, and I couldn't necessarily find, we removed that, and we have a reason for removing that in this CIP version. I have some comments on that later. But I couldn't necessarily find where the fire mitigation and impact fees are in the current CIP. So I just wanted to confirm with you, does that necessarily mean that they would be sitting in our account available to use on fire infrastructure needs in the future, or are those committed elsewhere? And if that's too difficult a question, we can talk about it later, too.
So those funds are available for the expansion of fire infrastructure, so we would be able to use those.
But just because they're not in this CIP doesn't mean we're using them in some other way that's not an infrastructure-related thing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, just to respond to Councilmember Hall's question, also on page 28, it shows like what's the expected balance in every fund, so fire impact fees is in there. So I had a question about the light rail planning. So I was reading about how in Redmond, you know, part of the reason they were able to get their project like under budget and way ahead of schedule is that they actually bought right-of-way back in like 2008. Is that something that we're looking into in terms of our planning process? Because to me, it seems like, you know, doing a lot of planning on that and getting ahead of that could, you know, help mitigate against some of these just like absolutely astronomical cost increases that we've been seeing in other sound transit projects. And then, you know, if we get savings because we're able to like acquire, help them acquire the land at a lower cost, then maybe it's like, oh, now we have all this extra money that we can then use to build the Lakemont Provisional Station with the parking over there instead of having like a giant parking lot in central Issaquah.
Certainly, that's something that is a possibility. I know that we are interested in doing what we can to facilitate the build-out of light rail to Issaquah. We are starting the kickoff process for preferred alignment and to be able to select that preferred alignment for light rail. We also need to make sure that sound transit is supportive of that. I think one of the advantages that the light rail portion in Issaquah has is that we do have a lot of right-of-way in I-90 that's anticipated to be used for this project, and that's something that WashDOT and Sound Transit anticipate. And so that's strongly in our favor already. When it comes to station placement, that's still something we're going to have to sort out and understand how we can then facilitate the preferred alternative. So those are decisions that I think we can make in the future. We have some time to be able to make those. And we certainly want, we certainly are trying to adopt all of the lessons learned by the cities who have built out light rail before us to help facilitate the process.
I had another question on the Northwest Semamish Road. So it looks like the funding, there's like $17 million in TBD-backed debt. Like, so my understanding was that with the TBD sales tax in the first year, we're expecting like $2.2 million of revenue. So that's like, it's basically like eight or nine years' worth of TBD sales tax revenue going to this one project is kind of what we're anticipating?
Yes, depending on the cost of that debt service. So we, the debt markets are in a lot of flux at this point, and because we're a couple years away from needing to borrow that money, we haven't made any estimates on what that debt service could look like, but that's certainly an exercise that we'll perform in the future.
Yeah, makes sense.
Other questions? Okay, I have none. City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to make public comment? All right. Anybody in the room want to make a public comment? No, not seeing anyone. We will go to the questions. Do we want to put those back up on the screen? There we go. Thank you. So this is the time for council feedback on the questions that we are being asked or other feedback on the plan. So Councilmember Marts, you may lead us off.
All right, I will go back to the well, once again, and make a plea for our existing commitments. You know, there was a night, and I think it was over in Old City Hall Northwest, we had a meeting over there about resources, and I'm thinking it was five years ago, and somebody's gonna tell me it was 10 or 15 years ago because time flies when you're having fun. We got down to the point where it was like, our two biggest priorities were the stoplight at Providence Point and the improvements in Northwest Semamish, or Northwest Semamish Road. And so we're like, gosh darn it, we're gonna do those two things. But okay, we'll do Providence Point first because, I don't know, it was slightly less expensive at that moment. And, you know, I just, I just want to remind this council, you know, we get to do what we want to do, but there is a long and deep history in this community of wanting to get these pedestrian improvements done on Northwest Semamish. And, you know, I've never, I've never understood why, you know, Newport, the improvements on Newport are just astronomical amounts of money. And we've been wrestling with those since before I was on council. We were, I remember the first I see, we are in the season where potential city council members are, join us to sit in on our meetings so they understand the issues better. I was sitting out there in the audience in 2009, talking about improvements on Newport Way and the stretch in front of Issaquah Valley Elementary. And here we are, 16 years later, having made only minimal improvements there. Nobody in the public comes to me and says, gosh, our city is so close to being great, but we need to just improve Newport Way. Whereas Northwest Semamish, I mean, I've had 100 people who live up there tell me how important it is to make these improvements. So I trust you when you say it's not just a placeholder, the numbers are eye-watering, but we need to do it. And I just want to remind my fellow council members that there's just been, this has been a long and heavy pull, but we need to just keep at it. And I want to be on council when we are able to walk safely along that stretch all the way from those great communities into the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Sure, I'm still chewing on some of these other questions, so maybe I'll come in for round two as well. But echoing Councilmember Marts in terms of emphasizing our continued commitment to Northwest Semamish Road and that project, I think it is helpful to know what kind of impact that could have on ITS and other potential TBD sales tax-funded projects, but think that this is a priority and that we should continue to emphasize this project, so I was happy to see that it was funded, or planned, not a budget, a planning document, planned. I also, I feel really, I feel like we should keep Fire Station 71 in the capital improvement program. I think that there is value in keeping that here. I can't, none of us can say with any certainty what's gonna happen in terms of station ownership, even if, even if E-Side Fire and Rescue becomes a separate authority. I mean, it's just as likely that we consider other answers to the EFOR question, like annexing into fire districts as a city or something like that. So in fact, I think that it might even be more likely. Of course, those conversations are evolving, and so we won't know for several years. But the point is, it'll be several years. Like, we'll be at the next CIP before we're even close to having an answer to this question. And in the meantime, I think it's kind of important that we continue to track this thing in the CIP. And from my understanding, it looked like it was just the fire mitigation and impact fees that we had fun, that we had used for funding improvements in that project, at least in previous CIPs, right? Recognizing that need is greater than what's in that account, but, but still keeping that page alive makes sense to me. And I'm curious what other council members feel that way, because, you know, we also had a conversation, too, around potentially building a new fire station, and we got a kind of glimpse into the need that exists in that station. I think that there are more immediate needs, too, that we could potentially be capturing in a CIP page. in a CIP page. And that might be challenging, too. I don't know. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, and hopefully we can have a conversation as council about that tonight.
Council President Walsh.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I appreciate Councilmember Martz's reminder of how important our commitments are and, again, the priorities we have heard consistently from the community over and over again. So when I look at these questions and the direction needed and say, yes, I support smaller, immediate projects over large-scale visionary projects, I want to distinguish and say there are certain areas that we have made big commitments and have been pushed back by WashDOT's construction timeline. But that is not a large-scale visionary project that we would ever seek to abandon. But I do think that during my time on council, we have kept many large projects, including a lot of the Newport Way projects, on the list without the ability to fund them. And we're still progressing with planning costs and, you know, documentation. And so I think we should take a step back and keep track of those needs, but our time and money really should prioritize things that we can accomplish in the short term. And from my perspective, that includes maintenance, and that also includes projects that are about pedestrian and other mobility safety. Anything that is sidewalks or crosswalks, I think we should definitely look at prioritizing. As for supporting maintenance over new assets, yes, yes, please. I think the important thing to recognize there is whenever we build a new asset, it just gets us even farther behind on our maintenance needs. And so we really need to step up the investments that we make on those maintenance areas so that we do not see things crumple. So those would be my preferences. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. A couple of things. Really tough year to build a CIP. I mean, it is, I just want to acknowledge that. This was an incredible jigsaw puzzle to put together, so it's even going to be a harder process next year to put the budget together to fund '27 and '28. So that's just kind of its preamble. I believe that maintaining our existing infrastructure always should take priority over new investments. And we have found time and time again, when we don't do that, we really hate ourselves, and then we end up having to make a large investment to play catch-up, which really leads into the next thought, which is our facilities have been ignored for far, far, far too long, and we need to address them. This is a can that's been kicked and kicked and kicked and kicked. And then I just want to finish with my take on South Lake Sammamish Non-Motorized Improvement Project, which is super important. And it's also has, is in the next phase of the CIP. It has clearly identified what the cost estimates are, where the funding is going to go. So I think it captures, the CIP captures that priority really nicely. Again, it's going to be a challenge for the council next year to figure out how to fund the CIP. But from a planning perspective, I'm kind of, I kind of like where we are, and I think it's a tough roadmap to lay out, but it's a roadmap that tries to fill the holes as effectively as possible.
Councilmember Jing.
Yeah, I think I want to echo what everyone else said about the importance of maintenance. You know, like if you don't maintain your roads and they fall apart, it costs way more to just completely, you know, resurface them and all that stuff. Also, I didn't mean in any of my comments to, you know, express skepticism about the importance of the Northwest Sammamish Road pedestrian improvements, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're really acknowledging like this is a really, you know, it's a large cost and there's going to be trade-offs and, you know, for years to come with that. But ultimately, you know, again, as you mentioned, Deputy City Administrator, we're in such an uncertain period. You know, we have no idea what the debt markets are going to look like in three to six months, let alone like two years when we actually do these projects. So I think as far as the plan goes, it's good. It captures a lot of the projects that we're working on. I also do want to echo what Council President Walsh said about, you know, with some projects that are maybe less likely to get funded, maybe those are areas where there's some like planning costs that we could potentially cut back on. But ultimately, I think, you know, it's, we're going to have some tougher decisions to make in the budget next year.
All right. Anybody else want to make comments?
All right. I, too, am a strong believer in prioritizing maintenance. I think I've expressed that pretty clearly in other settings, especially our facilities that, again, have been let go for years and years and now need major work done. And either way, they're going to cost us money. If we don't do something, eventually, we're going to have to remove them, and that is also a costly process. So these are things that have been on our books, and we need to pay attention to their needs. And same thing for roads and pavement. I agree with Council President Walsh on the need for maintaining our roads, the road system that we have before we start building other roads. However, I don't regard the Northwest, I never get the name of that right, Northwest Sammamish Road. For some reason, it just doesn't compute in my brain. But that, to me, is an existing roadway that needs major improvements and so, and safety improvements that are really important. So I agree with the comments that have been made in that direction. I am going to put in a plug again for light rail and for the planning we do on that. That, again, is a commitment we've made. We've made it for a long time. It is coming, even though it's still 16, 17 years away, but we used to say 20 years. So it will be here, and we had better be ready for it because this is going to be like the major project for this city when it finally gets here for construction. So we need to keep investing in those plans and keep investing personnel in planning along with Sound Transit and Metro and the other players that are in that and our fellow cities around us. We need both people and equipment in that project. So I want a shout-out on that one. And then I am really anticipating the results from our task force, from our facilities task force, and what they are going to come back and say to us with regard to how we could possibly fund what projects, first of all, they think are top priority, and then secondly, how we can possibly fund them. So is there anybody else before we conclude that would like to make additional comments or hasn't had a chance? Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question, too, because you had some really specific direction-needed questions, too. Is there anything you're not hearing that you were hoping for us to have a conversation around in different areas? Or can you interpret us not bringing it up as endorsement of all your great work in the different areas of the CIP?
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I believe we have all the feedback that we were hoping to receive tonight, so thank you.
All right. If there are no more comments, and let me just say, too, going through, I put a goal for myself to go through the CIP page by page. I, again, I'm looking at it and thinking, this was an amazing amount of work, very good work. It really does help us when we get to the budget time, even though it is a planning document. It really helps us when we get to actually talking about the money. And so I really want to compliment staff for the work that was done on that. It is, so I think that's our roundup. You've got everything that you need. And the next item on the agenda is Good of the Order. If there's anybody that would like to provide Good of the Order. Not seeing anything. Oh, Council President. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm just floating up here. I understand. So I wanted to talk to the council for just a moment. I have received requests and support from the community with the idea of renaming the East Sunset Trailhead in memory of Senator Bill Ramos. And so I've talked to the administration about this a little bit. Our typical process is to go through a new business request item, and I'd like to ask the council to waive that process and just ask the administration to come back with a way to accomplish this. They've actually already done the initial research anticipating this idea, and I believe have suggested that they could return at the meeting on July 9th for our consideration. So first, I wanted to just check in with the council and see if there were any concerns with waiving our new business request process.
Thank you. This is a council...
Yes, you can't take a motion. In working with the council leadership, I think if there is general direction, that there's no objection this evening, we'll move forward. We would ask that it be a multi, still be a multi-step process. We would like to come on July 9th and share, the council has an existing process. We want to share the history of the use of that process and then let you consider how you'd like to move forward. And so depending on that discussion, come back then at a future meeting with some action. But to have the July 9th be a review of current policy and then the use of that current policy.
Right. So is there...
I'm sorry, July 7th.
July 7th. Are there any objections to moving forward with the process as described by the city administrator?
Thank you.
Seeing no objections.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for the Good of the Order? My apologies to Council President Walsh for almost missing that. All right, we are adjourned at 8:30, it looks like 8:33. There we go.